Good evening, this meeting is now called to order. Roll call Matt and Kurt.
Trustee Woods.
Here.
Trustee Brooks. Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
President.
Trustee Franklin.
President.
Trustee Bowden.
President.
Trustee McMullin.
President.
And we are...
Here's the stamp of the veggie.
To declare the United States of America into a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, this is the time for our public comments. Is there anybody that's signing up for public comments? You're getting that, John? Thank you so much.
I know, I guess. When I start wearing the belt on.
Yeah, I think we should all do that sometime on the holiday. You too. Public comment, just move forward.
Public.
Yeah.
Alright. So, generally in regards to the public comments, there's a couple of things to be aware of. Is that in regards to public comments, and this is what I like to say when I go to... Is it a... Is a public meeting, not a meeting of the public. One of the first things that I would ask is that everyone be professional in their comments. Each person will be given four minutes, three, alright? Three minutes. The board does not have to respond to your public... To your comments. That's what I mean. It's a public meeting, but a meeting of the public. So, with that, we can go ahead with the first person on the list.
Vivian Covington.
Good evening, everyone. I come today to see that the construction work is being done that was promised with us from I... From the CMAP. That project is supposed to be done next month. I'm looking forward to another project that we had... Previous board had approved. And we have, don't forget, the one for Metro. It's $3 million rehab for that one. And the 1.5 million dollars is allocated for the Cicero project. So, I'm hoping that the board continue with these projects that was implemented years ago, that worked so hard for. And I'm happy to see these one done. And also, there is also a project where ComEd is supposed to install LED lights. And I hope that you stay on that one as well, to make sure those are done, because that was a free grant that we got as well. So, these three and the one next month is supposed to happen. Then the one on Cicero, Phase Two by the Metro Station, and the one for Cicero. Now, the one at Cicero, it's already been paid 100% to the engineers. So, there will be no money needed to allocate or to match that. So, I'm really hoping that the board will stick on these, follow that, make sure those things happen, make sure those monies are allocated. And I see also that you have received a capital bill of over $200,000. That's a great thing. So, make sure that those monies are done and distributed the way they should. As you know, the governor has given us a double of the NFT funds. So, that way, I hope we're prepared for the winter as well. So, with that said, I just want to remind you of that. And I would like to tell the board, I know there's no leadership training for elected officials, but however you can, go IML.org, because the June issue that you did receive, you really should look at it. And it tells you each felony that's attached to anything that's done illegally. And I am here as a taxpayer, and I will be watching my dollars and making sure the board does as close to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Emmett Rule.
Hello, board.
Hello.
Uh, seems to be taller than me, so. I just got one question. The majority of you, I've had head over asking Thornwood House building. And many of you, most of you, should know what my number one complaint has always been. And now that you have been elected in these positions, I'm asking that your promises be kept. And that's just one thing, really, for me. I've been seeking for that road leading to our building to be fixed. Those pathways are getting deeper and deeper and deeper. As a resident of this community for six years, and getting involved in this community in the last two years or so, I've had you guys over several times, and I... I'm hoping that you guys, with all this money and budget, and I've talked to you guys numerous times, if you can give us a hand, so let us know. Let us be happy. We want to see that road fixed. And I want to say thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rule. Thank you. Now, I don't want to mispronounce your last name.
Greetings, board. I am here just to ask a question in regards to... First of all, I'd like to say that I'm here in support of the work that's going through and that's coming ahead for University Park. But I would like to know, is there been any funds allocated in reference to working with the police in regards to the growing crime that's going on in University Park? And are there funds being looked at or allocated for this food desert of having a grocery store within our community where our money is being spent within our community instead of all of our community money going outside of the community? Thank you.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I can answer as far as police. What happened was is that about four years ago, when the village did fall short, what was the problem with the police department was that payroll was not able to be made. I was the chairman of the Police and Fire Commission at that time. It was a tough decision that village had to make by letting go seven officers. I can tell you, as of this week, we have at least replaced, of those seven officers, let me say that three to four were full-time officers, okay? As of this week, and it was a slow process, two officers have been hired and they are on the street. The village manager, yes, money is being allocated to the police department. Mayor spoke with me maybe about two weeks ago, and that was a concern that we definitely wanted to work on. He had said that he would dedicate that to me to make sure that the crime in University Park does go in the right direction. Being a retired police officer, 15 years on the street, I can assure you that we are taking those proper measures. So, also with that, we are going to be purchasing four squad cars. But the problem that came in the past was that we were not able to pay for leasing these squad cars. What the village did in the past was that they outright purchased vehicles, and so officers didn't even have vehicles to patrol in. But our current village manager made way by two years. We have shown Ford Motor Company that we have been paying the bills on time, money being allocated to officers, being hired. And also, I know we have two, but you should expect probably two more, as well as a school resource officer, and we're also trying to dedicate a community service juvenile officer. So, those are the things that are out into the future. They are some months away, but please understand the reason why you may not have seen the patrol that you have seen in the past was only because of the shortage of manpower. And the police academies aren't full. So, the officers you have, they're called lateral officers. Those are officers that are already state certified, and the Police and Fire Commission took many measures that making sure that through the protest process, they are indeed the best officers for University Park.
Thank you, trustee Woods.
Thank you, Mayor.
Curtis Blanchett, were you signing in, or do you have comments?
Signing in, Mayor.
Signing in, alright.
Same thing with Garrett.
Okay, sign with Mr. Niggo. Okay, now that brings Jana Williams to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I acknowledge that the parade and the fling was very nice. I have no problem giving honor where honor is due. Everybody that was committed to that, you did a great job. Only thing I could say that could have been better was when you gave out the school supplies, we had to wait in line 38 minutes before they gave out the first bag, which is unacceptable. That should never happen. The other thing I want to hit on is the budget. Finance meeting was canceled, and I still don't know what's going on with the budget. I used to attend those meetings, and I would like to know where the money is and how it's being allocated. Mrs. Jones, Dee, I'm talking, I'm not yelling. But I wanted to ask you again for the 99 time, where's my foyer from June 28th? And you, Mr. Attorney that sits there, if I don't receive it, I want to know what can I do legally? Because I feel like it's my right. And anytime I asked for things in the past before this new mayor, she would have the decency to call me or to say something. Now, it's a dead cat on the line. I ain't hearing from anybody, and I've asked, and I've spent my time and money coming up there, and I'm still getting the runaround. So, I want to know where that is. Also want to say, if we're doing any kind of economic development, we need to first get the water situation straightened out. We need to give this place the facelift that the money from Clorox was supposed to do. We got two restaurants that want to open. I've talked to both of those gentlemen. I don't know what the problem is, but the place is still not renovated. But y'all want to sit here and stop Mr. Dickerson aiming from doing renovation? But y'all ain't even doing renovation, but you got the nerve to get mad at him. So, I'm not understanding. So, I would like to say, let's get those places up and running. Let's get a dumpster or something and get Public Works to start cleaning up this town center before we start bringing people in, because it makes no sense to bring a dirty house to the... To the real estate office and think you're gonna sell it. It ain't happening. So, please, Dee, my foyer, I know you tried to protect him, that's alright, that's what you like to do, but honey, I want my doggone foyer. And I'm not gonna be standing here too many more times asking for the same thing. I'm not the person, uh-uh. Put the needle on the record.
I will respond. I will respond to your concern.
Thank you.
Leading to the foyer. By Friday of this week, you will have the information that you requested.
Okay.
And I'm not sure about your June foyer, but I do have a foyer. I'm not going to debate you, I listen to you. I do have a foyer where you requested some additional information.
I did, but...
I'm not going to debate you.
It was the actual same foyer.
That you added to.
Your deputy chief had to rewrite it on the new foyer. So, it's not add, it's the same thing. She couldn't find it. So, you asked her.
I've got the foyer.
Well, she couldn't find it.
But I thought I'm not trying to debate with you. By Friday, I will have all of the information that's available by Friday.
Thanks.
Your recourse, as I put in the following letter, is what I respond to you. If you're not satisfied with the response from our village, I've always given the information to the office of the Attorney General. And to also make you know that you have the right to judicial review if you do not agree with our responses. So, that's by Friday.
Okay.
I have everything.
I'm gonna be...
Your attorney.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Deborah Steele.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deborah. I'm the president of Thornwood House Tenders Association. I have a couple of concerns. The first one mainly is the road leading into our establishment. Not only does it affect the cars, but it affects those that's wheelchair-bye, those that's pushing the walkers. It's very dangerous. I'm afraid that someone is gonna break a leg, you know? Because the holes are getting bigger. When it rains, you can't see the holes. But people use that as a main travel in and out of our building. My second concern is, because the water is so bad, we are living in a food desert. I think that because we're trying to get the water together, that this would be a perfect time to look at different store options to bring fresh food in our community. Our health is declining, whether we want to look at it or not. We got bad water, we don't have a place to get fresh vegetables, meat. How about bringing all these here? Not a story we make up, but one that's already been established. Two, the crime. The crime is reaching, has reached Thornwood House. So, whatever crime issues that the police is going to do, please include Thornwood House with it also. Thank you.
In reference to bringing the store to University Park, first of all, I would like to acknowledge the fact that I've gone into the Dollar Store, and it's in deplorable condition. I don't know whether it's the management or the constituents themselves, but I am totally ashamed of that Dollar Store, because the condition that it's in is just deplorable. So, I did talk with the manager, and they said it was a managerial type of thing. But if we can't even keep the Dollar Store nice, what do you expect about another big-box store or something like that coming into the town? And that can't even be addressed properly. So, I'm still on the Dollar Store about the maintenance, and we don't know if it's just general managers or the constituents who visit the Dollar Store. And if you have a Dollar Store in your community, you should be able to keep it up. And I really mean that, keep it up, because I have a chance to go to General Dollar in a park horse. And it's absolutely immaculate compared to our Dollar Store. So, shame on us if we cannot keep this in proper condition, because it's a perfect opportunity for us to do well with what we have until we get something that we want. But we really need to look into ourselves and look into our conditions that we keep the Dollar Store, because it's deplorable, to be honest with you.
Gloria Wolford.
Good evening, everybody. My concern is Aqua. Maybe, I don't know if this is the right form to do it with, whatever, but all of our bills have been zero since the last couple of months. All of a sudden, I have a bill. I don't know why I have a bill. I am in the same condition. I can't use the filters because my faucet doesn't... Can't do it. It doesn't fit and everything. So, I'm just... While they deliver the water, what is it, three times a week or whatever? But why should I pay the bill now? And if I don't pay it, is it gonna affect my credit? Or what do I do?
So, let me ask you, are you getting a water bill for usage? Because we're all displeased with the current actions of Aqua, trying to charge everybody for sewage bills. We're all in complete agreement with you on that one.
I don't know what this bill is for, because I have received zero bills for the last two months. All of a sudden, I got a bill.
So, from what we're understanding, it's a sewage bill. And we had a conference call this afternoon with Aqua and other agencies. And we, trustee Bowden and I, definitely expressed our displeasure of them coming back after they promised that they would not charge us for water until this part was completely resolved. And then for them to come back and back doors with the sewage bill is completely unacceptable. And I think we're gonna schedule a meeting with Mr. Blanchett very soon, so we can... Because I don't want to pay the bill. And I ask you, I don't want to pay the bill.
But the due rate is coming up, and I don't pay it. Is it gonna affect my credit? Or what do I do?
And I don't want to guide you in the wrong direction, because I'm in the same situation as you. That's a private company. And if we get further down the line, we're gonna borrow from our best for not to charge us a sewage bill. I think everybody on this board is in complete agreement with when they sent the email out. So, we'll have to come up with our own strategy, because it's completely unacceptable. But to be to advise you, I wouldn't do that. That would be illegal, man.
Okay, so I pay it if I want to or don't, if I don't want to?
My question today is to them, for myself personally as well. What are you gonna do, cut off my sewage?
Should I call them and ask them?
I think that's what you should call and ask them. Deborah J. Strong.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing? May I ask some questions before I start, sir? I noticed on the agenda, on the minutes, there's no indication of committee reports. Will that be occurring today?
This is a committee that's...
No, I'm sorry, as far as committee and commission reports. Okay.
Those are done at the regular board meetings.
Okay. Alright. Thank you for the correction. That being the case, first of all, representing Senior Citizens Committee, I want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, from the bottom of our hearts. For anybody who gave us donations, for anybody who came in and enjoyed themselves on Senior Fund Day. I know the place doesn't look like it did that day, but it's the same place.
It was fantastic.
Okay. Thank you. We were very pleased to have our founder of the committee, Barbara McKinley, present that day. One thing I just want to say about the Senior Citizens Committee, we are a committee that gives back to the community. All the donations that we receive, it's not all spent on that one day. It's not. We give to different youth organizations in the community, whatever direction we can send them in. But one thing I do need to say, in reference to the parade that occurred, we had two firsts from our committee alone. We had three seniors walking in the parade. So, see, that lets us know that this is a little something that H can do that maybe you didn't know about. But anyway, it's not every day you can have seniors walking in a parade from the beginning all the way to the end. And another thing I wanted to bring up, you know, if you don't ask, you don't receive, the Friday before the back-to-school celebration, I asked Emmett Rule from Thornwood House, that Friday evening, don't sit up and talk about you can't get there, you can't get that. You're on a motorized chair. Come on be in the parade. Well, here's a picture of Emmett. This is a first in this community, that a motorized wheelchair has been an entry in our parade in this community. And I want to say thank you publicly to Emmett. But I'm so glad he's not here to tell you.
He is right here.
I know, I know. But just to let it be known, that we will continue as a committee to do the best we can do, to do the best we can do. And we are the only committee of this community, that when we receive donations, you don't just see it at work, you get to eat some of your donations, and it's good. So, think about that when I come asking again next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Mrs. Strong, and your committee. Last but not least, Mildred Morgan.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Miss Melling. Want to just ask a few questions, and I hope I get some answers. I come up here and ask questions, and I'm not getting answers, and I don't hear it later on in the meetings. What are the duties of the trustees? And I ask that question, because when I see different things going on, I want to be able to come to Mr. McMullin or Mr. Brooks, trustee Liz. I want to be able to call them up and ask them about different things. I wish I could get an answer about that, if there have been duties delegated, what areas they're covering. I know that Mr. Brooks is over fire and police. I do know that. I do know that trustee Liz Williams is with, I think, the golf course and something else, I can't remember. But I would like to know, I think we all need to know, what are the different duties for the trustees? Also, in regards to the water. My husband and I received a $64 water bill. Not gonna pay it. I'm not gonna pay it. When we took on Aqua as a company to provide us with water and sewage, it was a package. That's what we're supposed to be paying for. Not take, and whenever you want to split the package up and allow us to do partial payments, I want to pay for full service. It was kind of them, and very thoughtful of them with the water. It was wonderful. And it's also wonderful that they did a couple of months of no bill, but to turn around and send me a $64 water bill, and I encourage everybody. I've talked with lots of people, and they don't like the idea of that either. Not too many of us like that. Also, and Mayor, please, bring Mr. Blanchett and his crew back out here, because I think that'll be a very, very interesting meeting. I'm gonna call him. I haven't been talking with him the last couple of weeks or so, but I am gonna be talking with him, just to let him know personally what I feel about it. The Dollar Store. OMG. I think that Dollar Store was brought in by the previous administration on a tip. A small, little Dollar Store. And you see how junky it is? It's just an example, a fine example, of how poor and sloppy the business decision was made on the Dollar Store. A tip for the Dollar Store? It's unacceptable.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. No, I'm not gonna respond to the sign on the Dollar Store.
I'd like to hear some response on something.
I just said we have a town hall meeting coming up the second week in October, which is October 12th, and some of those questions will be answered at that town hall meeting.
Okay, sir.
Ms. Morgan.
I'm the liaison to the cable station. I'm the liaison to the cable station.
I will be on the economic development project, and also will be a part of...
Can't hear you.
Economic development for me, and also on the Pine Lake restoration.
Wonderful.
Ms. Morgan? Ms. Morgan, you're right. I... This is... Come on, please. You're right, I am the liaison over the golf course. I also go out and I see things that need to be done, and I come back and I talk to the manager and make sure that, you know, it happens, it gets done. But what I'm working on, I've been working on for eight years, is an overpass on Governor's Highway. And I'm still working on that, and I'm getting good vibes from our government, from our government, from our governor, JB. So, I'm still working on that.
Trustee Jenkins? Can I just hear something from you?
Mrs. Morgan, we're gonna move on. We only have two responses right now. We've had our two responses, so we're gonna move on to some business discussion items.
I thank you all for your response.
To amend the agenda.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, trustee.
Alright. I want to make a motion to move item 584, 585, and 586, which were all presentation discussion items in front of item 581 for tonight's agenda, to amend the agenda. for tonight's agenda, to amend the agenda.
Motion by trustee Brooks, second by trustee, uh, Mayor Jenkins and McMullin.
Vol. 10.
Vol. 10.
Vol. 10.
Vol. 10.
Vol. 10. Vol. 10. I'd like to add, uh, 584. Five, item 584, which would be the Relief Center.
Welcome to the University Park City Council. Welcome residents. Um, I'd like to propose something. It's a hot topic, you know, and all.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright, usually I'm not this tall. Um, I'd like to bring up a hot, hot topic in this, in this state. It's the medical marijuana program. And, um, we know a lot of people are talking about it, and I'd like to bring it to city council's attention.
Yes, sir.
What?
We cannot hear you.
Oh. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So we'd like to bring it up to the village to adopt a proposal for an ordinance that you would allow medical marijuana to be in your village. And, uh, we're a group from Illinois. We hold many of licenses in Michigan. And, um, and we got four state licenses to date, and eleven local licenses, and several of them pending. So, um, we'd like to see if you would adopt an ordinance and, um, and give us a chance to come in here, build a new building, and hire all local contractors and all local people. Uh, we would employ twenty-five, thirty-five people. It'd be a fourteen thousand square foot building. We would go for a craft license, which is three licenses from the state. One grow, one processing, and one dispensary. We do have a piece of property that's vacant right now in the city, and, um, it's right off of I-57. Kind of like in the industrial area back there, off the road, so no one would even know we were there. And, um, the owner of this project is Michael Colletta. He owns property in University Park, and he owns several businesses up this way. So, um, we would just like to bring that proposal to you and see if, um, you would take up on that.
Okay, I, I understand that, and we know that that's a fast-growing stream of revenue for municipalities, and I'm quite sure that there may be some questions from the board, but I have a question as the mayor. How does that benefit our community? What kind of revenue can we look for? What are you willing to do as far as community engagements? Jobs are a vital part, are to have a workforce developed is essential, but also revenue sharing agreements, partnership agreements. Tell me what your proposal is for, for that.
Well, we hire all local contractors, and we would hire all local people too. So, the residents of this town would be the first going to get jobs, and they would be up to maybe twenty-five to thirty-five jobs, depending on the size of the building, what kind of licenses are given, and so on and so on. The revenue could be pretty good, 'cause a craft license brings a lot of money. So, we have a program.
When you say, when you say pretty good, ballpark figure, because, you know, people wanna hear, hear ballpark figures at least.
Well, it's tough to give a ballpark figure if you don't know what license you're actually given. Dispensary licenses give you so much money in tax revenue. And on the side of the tax revenue, we put aside a small percentage out of our company's pocket and bring it back to the city for your pet project, so that comes directly from us to you. And it all has to do with revenue, you know, how much you brought in. If you bring in a million dollars, you guys are gonna, you know, if there's a million dollar profit, you're gonna see a lot of revenue. If there's five million dollars in profit, you're gonna see a whole bunch more. But it all depends on the licenses given from each state. If they give the craft license, that hires a lot of people, that brings a lot of money to the
When you say a craft license, please, I've been working with our state senator that sponsored the bill. So just give a little explanation to our board members and our general public, who might not be familiar with the terms that you're speaking of.
A craft license is a dispensary license, it's a processing license, which makes your dummy bearers gain bars and cartridges, your bait cartridges. And a grow facility grows plants. And, um, and with those three licenses and one craft license, it would bring an awful lot of jobs to the community, and it would bring quite a bit of money to the community. And everything depends on what licenses are given and, you know, and how big they allow us to go. So there's a variable and a formula to it, and I can't give you that unless you adopt the program and, um, and you write an ordinance, and then we'll bring a proposal to the city, like other people will do also, 'cause we wouldn't be the first one. Once you adopt an ordinance, there will be other people that'll knock on your doors, and you will pick out the best one, if you choose to have one. So, I'm just bringing it to you, and, um, and other people will bring it to you too.
Just to pass the This was first brought to our attention during the retreat, and, um, we want to know how it's gonna benefit the residents of University Park, because how does yours differ from what they have in Homewood? Homewood, uh, they have a particular, uh, facility in Homewood right now, but how? I'm, I'm looking for a tax relief for the residents of Illinois, I mean, the residents of University Park. And we didn't even cover that, because, uh, like right now, it's, it's basically vague, but how would it affect the general taxpaying public in Illinois, I mean, in University Park?
And first of all, we're friends of ours in Homewood. We're pretty much friends with everybody in Illinois, right? We know the guys that are the players in Illinois. Second of all, the revenue comes from the state for the taxes. And whatever that revenue is, it's already set in stone what you guys will receive for those taxes. So, right now, Illinois is like nine percent for just about everything you do, which is three licenses. So, it's nine percent to grow, nine percent to process, nine percent or more, sell it. So there's a heavy tax on it. You guys get a portion of it. But that formula depends on what exactly licenses you get. It's not gonna be easy for the state to hand University Park a license. There's millions of, of counties out there, and towns out there, and villages out there, all putting in for the medical marijuana project. And, um, they're only giving out like sixty-something licenses. So somehow, we gotta win the awards of the state to even get this license here, 'cause they're not giving it to everybody. So I think you got a really good chance of getting one. And I think we have a good chance at, at, at getting one also. So it takes a team to get anything done right. We'll employ all the local people from town that are looking for jobs. We don't pay anybody minimum wage at all. We're not even close to minimum wage. And as far as the money's concerned, it all comes down to what kind of licenses we get. I mean, when we give money away, we donate money back to the village through a nonprofit company, goes directly to your pet project. So there'll be a formula to it, and everything is, 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 you know, the, the books are wide open to the state and to you guys. So every bit of profit we make is directly in your hands at all times. You'll know every year, every month, what kind of profit coming from us or whoever you choose, and how much money you're gonna be able to, to take.
Well, I just, I don't want our village to be left behind, and this is the beginning of the, the whole process. And I think we should, uh, workshop this whole thing to the village, and I would like to hear from our constituents and how they feel about it. And, uh, I just wanna have an open mind about this. Because ultimately, I just want to be able to, uh, give taxpayers some relief in their, uh, taxing, uh, in the taxing bodies. That's all.
Well, you know, the relief comes from the state. The money that comes from us goes to your pet projects, fixing sidewalks, fixing parks up, whatever you decide to do with it. Fire department schools, you know. The reason why it comes from us to a non-for-profit is it's a little difficult for us to give money to schools. It's a little tough for school kids to take medical marijuana money. So we don't do that. We give it to a non-for-profit company, and we allocate it to go to the University of, um, University Park, to whatever pet projects you're looking for. So this way, it goes directly to you, and you'll know how much that is by the revenues we bring in. Um, we hold eleven licenses in Michigan. We haven't been turned down on any. I'm really sure that if you adopt an ordinance, and we push hard as a team, and we will not be the only ones knocking on your door, so I'm sure we're gonna have some competition. But if you put it out there, we'll go for it, and, um, see what we can do. You adopt an ordinance.
Mayor, may I be recognized? So I agree, this is a controversial topic. Um, we are in a position where we happen to be creative and unique about ways to bring in revenues into the village. Uh, my concern is, in your professional opinion, what type of security measures have to be put in place? And what effect, uh, does, would it typically have on crime rates and different things? And the security measures that have to be put in place, is this something that is the responsibility of the village or is it typically the responsibility of the company that brings in, uh, dispensaries and different things?
It's our responsibility. We got a license today, I have ninety-one cameras around the building. You can't get anywhere close to the building.
Uh, they, some of them, some of them can't get to the back.
We have ninety-one cameras in the building. We got a license for it today. And, um, and so when you walk into these facilities, unlike a bank or a grocery store, you can't walk in without a hoodie and sunglasses on. You have to be a member to walk in. So even if it's recreational, you have to sign up, be a member, give your card, give your license, walk in like a doctor's office, sit down at the desk, put your card on the table, 'cause you cannot get in the back where the medicine is until everybody knows who you are. So you can't walk in with a hoodie and glasses. We're not likely to get robbed too easily. A bank, you know, you walk in and no one can say anything to you. What statistics show you, it's a lot less dispensaries having legal troubles than liquor stores or banks. And one of the things you bring to the community, 'cause let's face it, we can't get away from marijuana use in the state. If you want it, you know where to get it. And at least if you get it from us, it's all state-approved and state-tested, so at least you know what you're buying, it's all been tested. And it'll never stop the black market in the state. So, there's always a guy down the street selling it. But at least it gives the opportunity to the people around here. We can draw them in from all sides. We're award-winning cannabis growers. Cannabis cup growers won many cannabis cups. I don't know if you know what a cannabis cup is, but, like, winning the Super Bowl, you know? So we've won many of cannabis cups. We grow some of the best mis, medicine in Michigan. So at least it gives the opportunity for somebody to say, "Hey, I want that stick-tested stuff. I'll pay a little more, but I know it doesn't have crack in it."
Mayor, may I be recognized? Uh, you said that, uh, you have, how many dispensaries in Michigan?
We have three approved ones. One grow approved. Eleven licenses total, but it's taking me time to build them all out. You have to build them out, get the occupancy permit, and the state will come in. But we're, we're pre-approved on everything that we do right now, so.
Okay, how many do you have in Illinois?
None.
Zero. So University Park would be your first place?
We pick University Park because we have a nice piece of property. We think it's a great place to do business, and we think we can draw people in from, you know, from Cook County and Will County, coming off of I-57. So they'll come here, they'll, you know, shop at your stock, you know, eat here, shop somewhere, or just visit us. We're not far from the truck stop, so it's a good location.
Oh, you, you have, uh, so your property is by our area, you said truck stop?
Yeah, it's right down the street.
Okay, our property near Monique?
Monique Manhattan Road, right off I-57.
Right, so for those who don't know, we do own a piece of that property over there by the truck stop. That is University Park, if I'm not mistaken, Mayor. We also, in Metro Bay, we also own some of those gas tanks over there, those, uh, the pumps, I'm sorry, gas pumps. So, in saying that, uh, uh, I, I have to agree with, uh, trustee McMullin. Something like this would have to be workshop. Uh, Village University Park do pull in about nine, about eight, eight million in revenue by the end of my term, twenty-twenty-one, when Tiff V expires. We should be up to about twelve, thirteen million in revenue coming into the village. I think that this definitely would, uh, uh, you know, would help any community. But also, as you said, it is a hot topic, and I definitely wanna know what people at University Park feel uh, before I cast a vote for, uh, an ordinance of such, uh, being here in our village, because that is a concern. Uh, I will say probably the benefits you have, and probably the residents probably wouldn't mind this closer to that truck stop. We don't want nothing here in Town Center, 'cause if you was gonna say it was coming up here in Town Center, I was gonna tell you, pack your bags, don't waste your time. We wouldn't even have that conversation, right?
We don't do that stuff either.
Right, so some have, some have tried, so, uh...
We like being hidden in little spots, that if people know where we are and know the medicine we have, they'll come and find you. We don't wanna, you know, we don't put the big green signs out there and big green leaves, "Here we are, come and get us," you know? We don't do that kinda stuff. We don't even advertise, um, where you know we're a medical marijuana shop. So, you know, we're pretty low-key kinda guys, 'cause we go by what we do. I mean, we're not the big guys in town. We're not the Crust Goes from Homewood. We ne, we never wanted to, you know? But we're the, we wanna be the best guy. So we grow the best med, um, medicine in Michigan. Got thirty cannabis cup awards, or close to it, Cook County a couple of years ago. And, um, and we just like University Park.
Have you been to any other village yet?
No.
No, so we're the first one?
Yeah.
And that was only because you had the property, or you have a property here, it seemed like a prime location?
I got a couple of aldermen that asked us to come to a couple of other places. We've been vested with a few people before, but, to be honest with you, I got so much stuff going in Michigan, I can't keep up with it. So, I don't got time to mess with everybody who's looking for us to do something. I just don't have the time. This is a great location. It's a great, you know, s, group of people around here. It could use a little help. We know it. I grew up in Creed. Been living out this way all my life, and, um...
That helps.
We used to own Dairy Creek Golf Course, so...
That helps even more.
Well, got rid of it many years ago, but either way, um, you know, we're local guys.
Okay.
And you do, and you do own a parcel in our industrial park?
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of quite secluded. It would work great for a craft license.
Alright, well, I give my time, man.
Okay, just your name for the record.
David Casey.
I would like to let you know...
Um, the Relief Center is the, um, is the dispensary. You can look that up on the website. We don't advertise, yeah, we don't advertise the grow and the processing.
I would like to...
What's your question?
I would like, uh, let the residents of University Park know that, um, the governor gave a breakfast about three weeks ago when I was invited, and, uh, some of the trustees and, uh, the mayor was invited as well. And the governor spoke, and he spoke very highly of the program that he got to, to pass in the state legislature, and, uh, legislation. And, uh, he stated that, um, he was very excited. There's a lot of upswing in this, but we really have to be educated as a community, as a whole. And that's why I want to shop this with the community as, as far as the upside to this, uh, dispensary. So, uh, I know, you, you should've seen the governor. He was really giddy about this program. He was really giddy about it, and, uh, that it passed. So, I'm very happy to, uh, workshop this thing and let, uh, residents of University Park, especially in this, uh, uh, positive thing for University Park, I want the residents to have full access to what we have. especially in this positive thing for University Park, I want the residents to have full access to what we have access to. And I haven't had a chance to visit dispensary or something like that, but I would be interested in visiting a location that you have or maybe that you're planning on having. Thank you.
Oh, in a couple of weeks, we'll be putting plants in the one we got licensed and approvals for today. So in three months, you can come by and see a processing center. It's just like a craft license. It's 20,000 square foot building growing 1,500 plants. It's got a dispensary attached to it and soon to be a processing center. So it's only an hour and a half away and good thing out of the deal, you can get a lunch. It's a mission. But yes, we would invite you, you can go to the website, we're the Relief Center. R-E-L-E-A-F Center. So, any other questions? I know it's a hot topic and I know that you want to go to the, you know, to the people in University Park and ask their opinion, because that's what you should do anyways, you know? We find it pretty much open. Sometimes the churches are a little on edge, sometimes the schools are. But every town we've been in that's been on edge has come to us and said, you know, what was edgy a year ago, nobody even talks about anymore. They don't even know we're there, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much. Mr. Good, Venture One? I'm sorry Speedway, but that kind of twisted around, so it's all good.
We have some in-house also, so. It's a few boards here. I've been in front of this board and sold property here in University Park since 1999.
Grab that mic, please.
So my name is Mark Good, I'm in Venture One Real Estate. I personally, through our investments, have owned property here in University Park since 1999. We have been involved in the development of what we call Gateway 57, which is the property on the south side of Stager. And goes from Sistro Avenue to Central Avenue. As you can see from the plan being handed out to you, we have planned ideally three buildings there. One building is a million one, the other one's about a million, a little million square feet, and one is 1.6 million. We have some challenges with our site in that there's wetlands on the site and therefore the larger building at 1.6 million is on an angle to avoid the wetlands, which we have to work around. Last year, the village was kind enough to pass a TIF for us, so we're now in, what's that, it's TIF 7, which became operational, I think it was earlier this year, early back year. So thank you very much for doing that. The reason that I'm here today is that we have been meeting with the village about preparing what we call a master development agreement. Jeff Friddickel is my head of development services and has worked on the Georgia Pacific Building, which is the TIF 5. And when we did that transaction, which is also a million square feet, they took a seven-year lease because the TIF in TIF 5 ran out of the seven-year. And they were concerned about the high taxes here in University Park, which is why you've had to have a TIF in some of your projects to mitigate the costs to these users. There are, when we did the Georgia Pacific deal, we competed with 18 different sites that could accommodate their use throughout the Illinois area. I brought with me tonight, just if you have a question, I have economic development for Will County. And John and I work hand-in-hand trying to attract customers to this site here in Will County. We also have a major project in Shawna, which is right outside Joliet, where we have just completed a million-square-foot building on spec, looking for tenants there. The, the goal of what I want to try to achieve tonight is that we want to try to create a master development agreement with the village so that when a user comes to us, we can show them what the opportunities are here in University Park and what the incentives might be that we offer that user for locating here in University Park. And so some of you might look at me and say, well, why do we have to offer incentives? You know, in TIF 5, they also offered incentives and close to 6 million square feet of space was built in TIF 5. The comment was made earlier, when that TIF expires, there's going to be a significant increase in the revenue to not only the village, but also to all the taxi bodies in that district. We're going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. So the question really is.
Second, backwards.
And that thing will have to advance by four since the votes go. So from, from the presentations in the past, what many of you know is that we're not in an isolated situation. We compete with other communities for business. As I said, Georgia Pacific looked at 18 different sites from Joliet all the way to Northwest Indiana. We were very competitive, we built a great building, we had worked with the village really well in terms of providing incentive package to them, and they made the decision to come here. These, we're gonna pass out a list of competitive locations to University Park. Every single broker that works with a user of this size understands the exact tax basis of every single community that you business in. So what you're about to see is you're gonna see, in Will County, you didn't go to any other counties, the five most active communities that we compete with. Monique, Romeoville, Joliet area, Molybrook, and Shawna, right? Own other property and just built this other building. What you'll notice is that the tax rate for the city and village, which is in the middle, for University Park is close to 6%. The tax index rate for all the other communities vary between 0.7% to a maximum of 2.2%. That equates to a tax rate on the same value a property here in University Park of $2.18 a square foot, where most of the other properties are right around a dollar a square foot. So we are over two times higher in real estate taxes for buildings that are built here in University Park than in our competitive locations. Monique has a TIF as well, we compete with them. So even though they're at $1.52, they still offer benefits to the customers coming in there. In order to be competitive with these other locations, we believe we need to have a TIF here, which you voted on last year, which we appreciate. But when we work with a company like Georgia Pacific and they're looking at 18 different locations, they want to know what will the village do, because they're shortlisting very quickly. We sometimes have only one to two weeks to respond to what is called a request for proposal. So we send in our request for proposal, we have to provide them what their rent would be, and then they ask for what their operating expenses will be in the building and what their taxes will be. And then they shorten this, sometimes they shorten this to seven or five, depending on three different sites that they're looking at. Most of the time, they, they wait the last minute to make decisions on these buildings. So we have to be prepared upfront to know what we can really offer them. Because the last thing we want to do is to not be shortlisted. We want to be on everybody's shortlist. So the request we made of the, of the village, we have this in almost every business park we have, Venture One is the largest owner of industrial real estate in the region. We own about 1,300 acres around the northern Illinois area in Shawna, Cal, Rockford, Pleasant Prairie, Wisconsin, Love's Park, I'm sure I'm missing one or two, but throughout the region. And in all of these areas, we typically have incentive programs similar to what we're talking about here to attract customers. So the request that I made of the mayor was that we create a master development agreement, which outlines the benefits of being in University Park. We met a couple of times through attorney to work that out. So I guess the request I'm making is that you, you provide the opportunity for the mayor and your legal team to negotiate with us this master development. What that allows us to do is to provide that agreement to potential users so they can see what the benefits are to come to University Park. Once they make, respond to our RFP and they're interested in coming here, we will have to do an individual development agreement with them specifically that will talk about their jobs, the hourly rate they pay, you know, when they'll move in, the size of the building, all that. But they're going to want to know upfront, you know, what benefits would be really, would be provided to them before they shortlist others. If you turn the page here, just to point this out, because I'm sometimes a numbers guy, but I also like graphics. Every single broker out there that represents these customers presents them with a graph that looks something like this. And they say to them, here's the, I'm not in the mic, I'll speak up.
Okay, it's time, Mark.
They say, they say to them, here's your five locations, or 18 locations. Here's Shawna, you can come here and pay this much in rent. If you do that, your taxes will be this much. Go to Molybrook, you're here, go here, you're here. If you come to University Park located in a building there, your taxes are almost five to six times higher than they are in the competitive location. Now, I did not create the tax levy here in University Park, I've been here for 20 years, but for 20 years I've known it's been high. And, and we've talked about that, I think I've been through five administrations, so I've been in front of you for many, many years, many of your mayors. And, and we continue to buy here even though we knew that the situation existed. Because, you know, we really like this location, we think it can be very successful, but we also need your help in order to make it successful. The next thing that I'm going to show you is with vision, what does it really mean to have a TIF in your area looking long-term for your community beside the job? So Jeff, you can hand this out now. I didn't want you to flip pages early. So doing, what this chart shows, and this is work that we did internally in my office, is we looked at TIF 5. Many years ago, the village had the foresight to create TIF 5. When you created TIF 5, you didn't necessarily know who would locate here in the village, what the buildings would look like, how big they would be, and what the revenue would be that they would present the village with. You provided typically a 75% tax benefit to try to mitigate the high taxes here with the surrounding communities. And you were successful. TIF 5 is now just about built out. We were one of the last buildings to build in TIF 5, there are some vacant sites, but not that many left. TIF 5 now contains 6.3 million square feet of space. That's a significant amount of buildings. The biggest one's going to Dark Container, to Clorox. And actually, we're number three at Georgia Pacific with a million square feet, okay? If you turn the page, what you'll notice is that we went through the tax records on every single building and pulled up what those tax records show are the taxes being paid into the TIF by each one of these customers and residents here in the community. Right now, these, this 6.3 million square feet is paying approximately $14 million in tax revenue. Now that's going into the TIF. And that's, and that TIF is paying some of those dollars back to those tenants for behavior. But all those tenants hire people. And those people that they hire spend money here in the community, work here in the community, hopefully live here in the community, okay? And that's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of jobs, okay? Which the village had the foresight to do many, many years ago. When this TIF expires in 2024, the village will see revenue from their tax rate of approximately $5.1 million. That's not the total tax rate going to the Board of Education or the School of Districts or anyone else. That's really the revenue coming to the village. I know that's, now it's only four or five years, but the vision from 18 years ago was allowing that to happen. So for the last 18 years, the jobs have been here, the buildings have been built, and the park built out and created. And the vision that occurred those 18 years ago now is allowing the village, hopefully in a few years, to receive this benefit, okay? The village will have a challenge at that time, because if you don't, if you don't deal with your rate in four or five years and those tenants now have to pay that amount of money, you'll have to make a decision whether they want to keep your rate that high or lower that rate to be competitive. But the TIF will be over and all tax dollars will be paid into Will County and you'll get your share, which will be $5 million, based on the current tax rate. I think from everybody here in the community, that's, if I heard your budget right for what your annual budget is, this will have a major impact on your annual budget in terms of benefits for hiring, leasing, and firing, and improving your village, as in choosing, okay? Our, our TIF was passed last year, it's a 22-year TIF. We hope to build out not 6 million square feet, because we're not as large, but we're going to build out around 4 million square feet, four and a half million square feet. And when we do that, you know, we will pay into the, into the TIF program. Some, hopefully some benefits that we've negotiated will come back to these users. So they're here employing people within your community, which is, I think, one of the jobs of the village trustees is to get employment to your community. That will happen with our development, all new, all new buildings. And then in about 20, 21 years, when those buildings go out of the TIF, they should produce close to $4 million of additional revenue coming back to the city, the village, in addition to the additional revenue going into the school system, which is, that's what we need in this, in all areas now that we develop in. So the only thing that I ask is, number one, I wanted to provide you with this information, is that you provide guidance to your mayor to allow him to help us create a reasonable development agreement that I can then provide to the users that we're talking to right now. We're talking several users that are in the million-square-foot range, they're in the market right now. I don't know whether you can, I've been in this business 40 years, so I've been through some ups and I've been through some downs. We're in an up right now. And you like, you like to always go fishing and the fish are biting, and they're biting right now. And we would love to break ground on a building next spring here in University Park for another million square feet. We will not do that if we're not competitive. There are just a tremendous amount of buildings we compete with every day. So the direction I'd like to, to see the village take tonight is to provide either a motion or a commitment to the mayor to allow him, with your attorneys, to work with us to create this master agreement that we can show to our potential users. So when they ask me, what will University Park do, I can say, here's the master agreement we negotiated. This is what they'll do for you, so you can plan on this, so we can be successful in attracting them to your community. So that's the presentation. I'm here to answer any questions you have on our business park, on our commitment to the, to the village. Also with me is, you know, John Bruegler from Will County, who has other economic development, who I work with hand-in-hand on bringing these customers to Will County and hopefully to University Park. But, you know, that's, that's the presentation and I hope you give the guidance to, to get this master agreement done.
May I be recognized? Yeah, and he's done before, this before. And this was in 20, might have been 2017, I don't remember, it was a Saturday morning. My current manager paid, it was a Saturday morning? Okay, so I do remember it being up and, and I just want to double-check something here. Prior to Mayor Covington leaving, wasn't there an agreement with Milton Payton and the schools? I think we all worked together, I'm a little confused on this one. I left the documents at home, shouldn't have brought them, but I was late running for football practice. But wasn't there a 15-year, 50% agreement that was kind of agreed? And I want to make sure, because I don't want the schools, you know, to be honest, this village can't afford another 23-year, 75% TIF. We just can't do it. And I think Milton Payton expressed that when he was sitting on that end. So was that not discussed prior to Mayor Runez coming, because he doesn't know?
Not with me, because there's a very big difference. In some of our communities, where we don't have TIFs, we have intergovernmental agreements. We have an intergovernmental agreement in Shawna. State law that says that in intergovernmental agreements, we go to all the different taxi bodies and create this agreement with them, not a TIF. Intergovernmental agreement really goes to a maximum, John, that is tenured by state statute. So an intergovernmental agreement in some of our business parks to provide us to build infrastructure, provide incentives, and we can do that out, you know, the Cal and other areas, we have inter- provide incentives, and we can do that out, you know, the Calve and other areas where we have intergovernmental.
What did you promise, what did you agree to us? That's what I want to make sure.
Okay, so.
I don't want, I'm going to be honest. It's, it, it, tonight is not going to happen for you, for the motion and all that because this is the meaning of the whole. But I don't want Milton Payton and Mayor Covington, well, Mel Covington is here, former Mayor Covington. I don't want them to come here and sit here and then there's a big blow-up.
If the president knew me and you're looking, I do know that that's your look. That's what I do. I go buildings all of them.
I understand.
We build, we build four or five million square feet a year in all different sized communities.
I understand that.
Different communities have to compete in different ways.
I understand.
You have a very high tax rate, so.
I clearly understand.
Okay, so in order for me to be competitive, we have to offer those users, and we have one right now that we're working with, and I'm going to come to you in the next thirty days, I think, and hopefully be able to try to move this forward. But if, but if we do not have an agreement that is beneficial to that user, they will go somewhere else. I guarantee that. The reality is, because there's, there's still those seventeen sites I competed with in Georgia Pacific, many of them are still out there. There, but, but from my perspective, we, we sat here with this property in TIF five and tried to do a deal, tried to do a deal, tried to do a deal. We didn't get one done for ten years. I've been working on Gabriel Fifty-Seventh for at least that long. And as we kept expiring and getting shorter and shorter in duration, we were very lucky to win Georgia Pacific with the seven-year remaining term. It was, because in seven years, that rate goes up to two or two dollars and fifty cents and there's no other philosophical modification to the situation on taxes. There's a good chance that a warehouse or like them or Dar or someone will just go somewhere else. On a million square foot building, you save a dollar square foot, they save a million dollars a year. That covers their moving costs. So there has to be some concept there. The great news here is that you do have a TIF that now goes for twenty-some years. Now, we have to, I think you have to look at it differently than an intergovernmental agreement. Okay? My property, no matter what happens now for the next twenty years, is in a TIF. Because it's in a TIF, those, those dollars that are paid in taxes go into a staff budget. They don't come to the village. You know, we know that story. I mean, the reality is, is that when money is paid on a TIF property, it goes into a, uh, into a trust and that money is kept in that trust for the benefit of the TIF area. Okay? So for that twenty years, those dollars are not used for school, village funds. Um, but they could be used for improving the infrastructure there, improving infrastructure in the area.
We, we understand that. You don't have to educate us that.
Okay.
Then what I'm making, because I have one, two, three trustees up here, they were not here, but I want them to hear what exactly, what you had here on the Saturday and what we have progressed from there. Because the point that I'm making is that I heard in the last, that I got before Mayor Ruiz got in here, fifteen-year, fifty percent on this TIF. And that's what I heard. Now, if you want to, I'll bring the documents that I have that you proposed or whatever you talked with Mayor Covington and Milton Payton. And we have the village manager here. So here's my thing, here's my thing, here's my thing. We can't afford another twenty-three-year TIF. That's where you're going to go with it. It says, it's, it's seven people up here. We can't afford it because we're in a situation where TIF money has been used when it should, twenty-two million dollars. And like I said, before I leave from up here, whether I run again or I don't run again, this is going to be correct before I leave.
I appreciate your comments, let me, but if I can respond. Okay? Every single one of my properties that I develop is either in a TIF or in a tax incremental district. Okay? Those dollars get spent in a TIF district if you have twenty-three years left. The, the village can make the decision at any particular deal to provide five years of benefit, ten years of benefit, twenty-five years, twenty years of benefit. Okay? That's up to you, that's not up to me. So I would never say to you, you should only do X or Y. We might get a company that comes here with a thousand jobs, another Amazon or someone like that that pays twenty dollars an hour. You're, you're competing against Indiana, you're competing against Indianapolis where they have programs and, and taxes a lot less than even here in Chicago. And you may make the decision, we want to do X. Okay? And that should be your decision because you, you control what you provide to those users as an incentive. And every single situation would be different. Okay? But what I'm telling you is that in today's competitive market and what we have provided in other users here with the vision that you had before, is that to equalize what these other communities are doing, because your tax rate is at two dollars and two and a quarter a square foot on a new building, equalize it, you typically have provided seventy-five percent, okay, of, of a benefit. That's, that's what you have provided. And that provides you, puts you on equal footing with a community that has a dollar a square foot in taxes that offers a fifty percent benefit. Now you both end up at fifty cents a foot of what that user is paying. And so I'm looking at this and saying, my job is to build buildings and bring revenue to this community long-term. Now let, let's talk about another statistic, which I think is very important. And national studies have shown that when industrial buildings come to an area, for each industrial job is brought to an area, three additional jobs are created in service provisions. Doctors, retail, grocers, that if, if you build another four million square feet here and today's users, they're hiring more people than they have in the past, and you bring one or two thousand people to, to this area, they're going to shop. They're going to spend money in the, in the gas stations, they're going to do other things. So there's a lot of ancillary benefits to being successful in your industrial works. Another reason to bring an industrial park to your area and really work hard to do it now, the reason you want to do it now is that from that perspective, you, you start to see revenue coming into your TIF district. Twenty-five percent, if we build a million square feet and your tax rate is, 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 uh, is, is two dollars a foot, that's two million dollars a year in taxes that that company is paying. Twenty-five percent of that, if that's what you end up with, is still five hundred thousand dollars. I'm not building twenty thousand square foot buildings. I'm building millions of them. And a million square foot building at two million dollars of revenue, if you ended up with twenty-five percent going into your TIF staff program, that's a half a million dollars a year. Over that fifteen years, that's seven and a half million dollars that go into your, your TIF pocket. And, 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 and we're in an economy right now that, that, that is booming for industrial. Why? Because of economies and things like that. It might not be that way in eighteen or twenty-four months. So we have a unique opportunity right now. You've got a new TIF, you've got a great developer, you've got a phenomenal community. Okay? There are users in the market that we are showing your property to right now. When they ask me, what are the benefits of being in University Park right now? They have two-dollar taxes. I said, we have a new TIF. What are they going to offer on the TIF? I said, in the past, they've done seventy-five percent, which you have. That equalizes you with other communities. To miss this opportunity for the next eighteen or twenty-four, thirty-six months, however long it lasts, I think would be a mistake. Now, I'm going to build buildings, I'm going to build more buildings. Shawnee, from Pleasant Prairie, Rockford, Briar Proffers. I'd like to build some buildings here. And, and, and again, the reputation of University Park from my perspective has been great, but there's been some issues.
Right, but, and, and, and let me say, I, I do remember this, this picture, this image here on that back end of these three warehouses. So I, I will agree and say, yeah, I remember that. You did say that it would be a perfect moment for us because for those who don't know, the picture he's showing us is over where the old drive-in movie theater is at. That's what he's talking about for the three warehouses back there. If you can flip that around so our audience can see, and also so the camera can see what we're talking about. So this is what the board voted on for the development in that, in, right, in the, in twenty seventeen, correct? So, uh, Mr. Goodman, I, I, let me, I'm going to give my time back here, but let me say this. I'm the, I'm the type of person, I try to keep my word as much as possible. That's why it's so hard to be a politician compared to being a cop. Because as a cop, if I told you I'm going to lock you up, I'm going to lock you up. But as a politician, if I said that I'm going to vote for the best interest of the people, that's what I'm going to do. And in this situation, I'm just being honest. We're tired of twenty-three-year, seventy-five percent TIFs because we have suffered. And it wasn't under this manager, wasn't under this, and I don't even think Mayor Ruiz was even in office when the developer twenty-three years ago came and, and gave it because the comment was made to me was, you know, you might as well let the farmers stay here.
Well, I, I mean, honestly, I, I, again, I own thirteen hundred acres and I farm thirteen hundred acres. I'd rather be building than thirteen hundred acres. Okay? So from my perspective, I only benefit if I can build something. Okay? And, and I spend my time where I think I can be successful and I invest my money where I think I can be successful. So from my perspective, you have been successful in University Park because you have built six million square feet on former farms in TIF five. A lot of places haven't built six million square feet. Now, sorry, I'll wait.
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Yes, yes, trustee.
I do believe, I'm going to make this clear, perfectly clear. Um, I'm with my, um, partner, uh, trustee Brooks. Let me make this perfectly clear. I am, uh, I have no bosses up here, no. And the only boss that I have that I have to be, that I have to adhere to are the constituents. So something like this definitely does not fall under the, the purview of the counselor or the mayor. It should be shopped with all of the board with a full understanding. I know you said two or three days, but I really think that we need a full understanding and then not left up to the counselor and the mayor, no disrespect, you know what I mean? So I have no bosses but the constituents. And I would like to abide by, by constituents.
Okay, so, so my, my comment was meant this way, because I work in a lot of different areas.
Go ahead.
Typically, when we work in, in, in an area, in a new business market, we have the, 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 the city council or the county, because sometimes we have TIFs that are countying for us. We typically work with the chairman of the county or the, 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 the village manager or the village president to create a document that's then presented to the council and say, here's a document that you can all review in common. I'd be happy to have a committee of the whole and meet with everybody on that. It's not a problem. I brought my attorney here if you had any questions on TIFs. I also brought my head of development if you had any detailed questions on our development and infrastructure that we'd be doing here. And obviously John's here from the county to help me. If you have any questions about other competitive sites in county or one of the communities I own. But I, I have no disrespect for the, for the, for the council that I think that the mayor and I could make the. But typically what we do is we sit down, we negotiate with the attorney for the village or for the, the county with the selected party from that community to come up with a document that then we can present and discuss. Um, and that's what I was talking about with this. I'm just looking for some direction.
With better understanding, we're not going to have the mayor or the counselor decide for us right now.
Okay. So, so let me, uh, maybe answer a few questions because I'm actually, I don't, I don't disagree with anything that the trustees are saying here. Um, I am aware that, um, Mr. Good and they met with a couple of our transactional attorneys and Mayor Jim and Michael, I think, met with them. And, you know, one of the things that we, that, um, was talked about actually was the idea of the, the seventy-five percent. Because in my mind, you know, um, can a development agreement be reached? Probably, um, but, you know, for you guys, for the board, the issue is this. To me, there's a, there's a far difference then if you say, you know, you may be more willing to give if you know Amazon is coming than if you know it's Joe's Fishing Shop. You know what I mean? Because you know Amazon is going to. Right, it's, it's going to be able to provide more jobs in the Joe Miller Fishing Shop. I don't own a fishing shop, but I'm just using that as an example. Um, so I, I am aware that there was, there was that meeting, but just to kind of be one of the concerns that, you know, can we, can something be worked out? Probably, but the idea that, um, the mayor and Jim and Michael had talked about was to have them come today so that you guys can get some of the information on there. Um, I wasn't expecting you guys to do any motion or anything of that nature behind me at all.
I missed a little bit.
Um, so, but it was more to be informative is my understanding from the conversation I had with Jim and Michael in regards to it. But, but I tend to agree with you, trustee Brooks and trustee Nolan, in regards to, yeah, you know, seventy-five percent is high. What are, you know, I think what's going on in Shanahan, um, at the very least. And I, and I'm not aware, you know, obviously I've just come into representing the village. You know, I think the things you guys have are in the Menucha area, Menucha-Shanahan area, I think they've done some tax abatements with the county on certain product, projects. And I think that's what you're referring to in certain, they did, the districts are doing a, an abatement of taxes because I happen to represent one of the fire districts there. So I think that's what you're talking about that.
My, my project is Crossroads Fifty-Five here. We did a tax increment financing deal. Did the thirteen different taxing bodies and took close to a year to get that accomplished. Companies won't wait a year. So we did that ahead of time before we bought the property and we would not have bought it without that because we spent a lot of that money on infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, I'm aware, at least with one of the entities, we had, you know, we were made aware ahead of time, they came to us ahead of time to ask us to do that. So I, I am aware of that, but I want the board to understand where the process was, that's what I'm.
Right, and, and that was done before we bought the property because we would not have bought the property without those, those incentives in place.
In these discussions, was the village manager a part of this at all?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
And it was, the conclusion is to ensure that everybody has this presentation in front of them so they can ask the questions, look at the documents. Because this isn't a solo project, then Mr. Good will tell you, his team will tell you. I insisted that you come and speak to the board at, at the committee and that you get a clear understanding of what's actually going on.
And I want to be very clear on something that Howard brought up to my attorney. And that is that the agreement that we were looking to do, which would be a master development agreement, because we have three million square feet, three different buildings, would be something that we can provide to somebody and say that if you meet the qualifications from the village, you would then have the opportunity to get these incentives. It wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a commitment by the village because you can't do that without knowing what the company is. Just like with, with Georgia Pacific, you can't do that. So, but if it gives the company the hope or the thought that, hey, if they qualify, and these are big companies that they play as for buildings, if they qualify and bring the right kind of jobs with the right kind of salaries to the community, then they could have the opportunity to get up to seventy-five percent. Doesn't mean you're going to give them seventy-five percent. But my perspective is, is that it allows me to go out to those companies and really market this property in a way that says, hey, even though our taxes are twice what they are in these other communities, there is an opportunity, if you meet these certain criteria, to be able to get these incentives that allow you to be competitive on a tax basis with these other areas. And that's, and that's what our was in doing the master development.
Uh, Mayor, may I please be recognized? I want to let, uh, trustee, uh, I mean, uh, Manager Payton before. Okay, go ahead, trustee. Uh, uh, Manager Payton, would you actually chime in on this? Because you seem to be a decided partner in this whole thing. And express to us, because we have full faith in you in this whole process. Please express to the, uh, village as a whole, please.
So I was about to interject after all the conversation. Mr. Good, my question, uh, do we do master, with Georgia Pacific, we didn't do a master developer agreement because it's just one developer.
Yes, we had one building and we had, what ended up happening is the end of the TIF five. All right, so we, we didn't, we didn't, it wasn't our, this, this TIF right now is basically ours. TIF seven is basically us and a smaller property. So this, this agreement, we're ninety-five percent of all the land in TIF seven. So it allows us to be able to have a document that we can use in marketing purposes. And again, we, we cannot do anything with the company and say, hey, sign this and you get this incentive. It all is going to come back in front of the board. What it does, it allows me to give a professional document done to, with, with your, with your, the board's approval, with the attorneys about, professional document and development agreement to a user. And then send it to their real estate department and their attorneys and say, hey, what do you think of this?
Understood.
So that, that's what would happen, yeah.
So do you think a master development, do you think that you would be able to cut or make any deals on any of these parcels without a master development agreement being done?
It would be very challenging because as, as you, as you see, for, for, for coming to an agreement from the, from the, from the beginning, it could take four to six months.
How long did it take, how long did it take for Georgia Pacific?
It took four months and we almost lost that deal. We had to break ground in August first of that year and our agreement didn't get signed until June. We took a tremendous amount of risk on that deal. And we, and we had lots of meetings here and they got comfortable that they would eventually get it, what they needed, but, but that was a challenge. That was a big challenge and we came very close to losing that deal.
And next question, I know the answer to. What is the percentage of increment that Georgia Pacific is going to give?
Seventy-five percent.
Okay. And most of the other developments that the village has done, pretty much a seventy-five percent. Others are ninety percent. So, you know, up to. So, you know, up to ninety, you know, between seventy-five and ninety.
What I asked.
The majority of the redevelopment agreements. So I just want to be realistic with the board. I understand we're doing this master development agreement and it says seventy-five percent. But there's words going out there, well, it's negotiable, not necessarily seventy-five percent and various statements like that all the same. But historically, the village has given seventy-five percent, in some instances ninety percent. So I just want to be very realistic that when Mr. Good does promote this and this master development agreement is done, more likely than not, the users are gonna look for seventy-five percent. They're not gonna look for anything below seventy-five percent. So I just want that to be realized as a factual thing and not something that's could be or could happen. We just need to be saying, hey, it's gonna be seventy-five percent, that's what it's gonna be.
I think the benefit of that is that, you know, right now we have three users looking at our billion square foot building out in Shanahan. Three users in the market that side. There's more coming. And the challenge is, is that we're competing with a lot of different places. And so we met with someone this morning that was looking at that building and they're gonna call us next week and say, you know, whether or not they're gonna come to our building and negotiate with us. And then if I had to say, well, give me thirty or sixty days to go try to figure out appropriate incentive without a beginning of the discussion. I can guarantee you it wouldn't be short.
So let me ask you this, okay? Let's say seventy-five percent is the number. Are we saying seventy-five twenty-two years? Or we're saying seventy-five fifteen years?
Okay, so I'll tell you how it works with my other business partner, because that's a very good question. Typically, what my communities do is if a company signs a lease with us, they'll sign a lease on these larger buildings that need work from ten to fifteen years. And so the community says, if you make a commitment to us that you'll sign a lease for ten years, we'll give you a ten-year incentive. If you sign a commitment with us to be here for fifteen years, we'll give you a fifteen-year incentive. So it's a quick throw problem. I mean, they're looking at saying, what is that company willing to commit to? To come to this location in this community? And then what is the community doing to keep them here for those terms? You want them here for a longer period of time. You'd want to have that appointment here for a longer period of time. So that would be a discussion and they'll go back and they'll do their math and they'll create their spreadsheet. We'll either be competitive or we won't. But, you know, we lose many deals, more deals than we win.
And so my concern is really not with you, Mr. Good, at all whatsoever. My concern is with the taxing bodies. I know for a fact, we had to go to taxing bodies, have closed-door meetings with the school district, the library board, members of the library board and other taxing bodies in order for Tiff Seven to happen because they, taxing bodies were totally against doing another Tiff because of the village's financial issues and the use of the Tiff in the past. One of the conversations and one of the statements that was made more specifically about the school district because that's gonna be the big, you know, the largest factor of the monies that come after, you know, either property is removed from the Tiff or the Tiff closes. Their, in their mind and their thinking is that this is gonna be a short-term Tiff. Fifty percent or fifteen, and let's stop saying fifty percent, let's just say seventy-five percent in fifteen. That fifteen years is what the school district is expecting. And if it's something beyond that, it would be, number one, we lose credibility with the school district. Number two, I don't foresee the school district ever agreeing ever again unless something significantly happens to create another Tiff on behalf of the village of University Park. Because they were totally against Tiff Seven and we had to have meetings in order to get them on board because of the issue. Mind you, it's still a factor, knock on wood, that this village may still owe the school money at the close of Tiff Five. So even on that caveat, they agreed to go with Tiff Seven. After all the four-year requests, after all the meetings and threads of us owing money, going to the controllers, off this requesting report and various different things like that. And that is still out there lingering and that still hasn't been resolved either. So I just wanted you all to be aware that if we agree to this, it's fine. But either we agree to it now and beg for forgiveness or we need to be getting to the school district and explaining to them what the circumstances are before you guys pass this master agreement. You guys need to have a meeting with the business officer and the superintendent of Two-O-One U. Because if this happens without them being involved based on the initial conversation that was had, you're not gonna see another Tiff.
And by the way, I'd be happy to participate in those and I do. I've met with many school board presidents and walked them through the incentives and the benefits. I mean, let's just be honest, I mean, in the industrial buildings that we built, the great majority of the workers in there come from the local high schools grad. So when you're a local high school in an area where there's rock for...
Not in University Park.
What?
That doesn't happen in University Park.
But I will tell you that our goal, again, I built in a lot, in Rockford, I built in Cal, I built in a lot of areas. I work hand-in-hand with, maybe even in Cal, with the local school districts. And they will put training programs together for the companies that are coming. We did Target in a million square feet. We did two million square feet for Three M in Cal. And the Cal works with the school districts there to help create training programs specifically for kids coming out of high school and going to work for Three M or going to work for Target. Those are very good companies. I would hope that we could have something here at some point that could do that. But in order to do that, you have to be able to get the companies to come here. And again, you know what, if it doesn't work out and we don't build another building for ten years, I'm still gonna patrol, that's all right. But the reality is that if I am still working, you know, my job is, is I love building buildings. I love doing it, I love building it because it's fun, it's enjoyable, I make some money. I can't deny that, but the reality is a great business to be in. And I like supporting the communities that I have.
I think this can happen.
And so that's my...
I very well think this can happen. I just think it's very important that we're transparent with the taxing bodies with this master agreement that we're negotiating.
And I understand the master agreement isn't tying the village to anything.
We understand it.
The master agreement is really allowing me to have a marketing piece that I can go to the companies and say, look, if you come here, this is what you have the opportunity to achieve here. Doesn't mean that they're gonna get it. They have the jobs, they have the salaries.
Let's be realistic, but we're being realistic here. Basically, you're gonna do a master agreement, be realistic. The businesses that come in, they're gonna expect ninety percent of the majority of the terms in the master agreement. I understand what you're saying, it's a marketing tool and it's not nothing, anything, no. But you know and I know, if you go to a big company and you show them this master agreement, more likely than not, most of those incentives are gonna happen.
But to my point, if I go to that company and say, if the village wants you here and they're willing to, and they want the jobs that you're gonna bring and the revenue that you're gonna bring and the long-term commitment of ten or fifteen years that you're gonna make, that's a negotiation, that's a discussion. And what they're gonna say is, hey, we'll make that commitment, we'd like to have that commitment back. And they're not asking for anything special. They're asking for University Park to create a market situation to other areas that they could also go to.
Mayor, can, yeah, I was gonna say, Mayor, let's be done with this. I want to thank you for yielding my time.
Let Mr. Good finish up and then we'll go to the next one.
Well, I can say this, we will, one way or the other, hopefully in the near future, be back to you with real deals. And real deals with significant benefit to the community. If for some reason we don't have a master agreement, then we will need to really work really quickly together because these deals don't get done over six months, they get done over thirty to sixty days. And if these companies feel, and I'm already talking to them, because they all know the history here in Spark, that if something can't be done here, I'm afraid we won't be sure. And I can't disclose the deals, but we're about to make a proposal on a fairly significant deal. And this is part of it. And if for some reason this is not gonna be achieved, and I don't know that sooner or later, but the reality is that my goal would be is that we could work together to make it happen, so.
All right, thank you very much, Mark. Speedway.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Good evening, thank you. My name is Matt Fox, I work for Speedway. I title on the division project manager, I work out of our Timely Park office. It's a division office that we have here locally. We were here, I believe it was in February of this year, talking about what we're gonna talk about again tonight, which is our proposal to add video gaming to one of our stores in University Park. It's Speedway store number seventy-six-ten, address is two-zero-zero-one, University Parkway, University Park, Illinois. What we're looking to do essentially is, we would like to ask the board for their consideration to issue a combination license. Today, we just have a combination license that would be on and off premise to sell beer. The purpose of that would be to assist us in that, in the poor license or establishment license, which would allow us to have the video gaming on site. So what we're looking to do is, I believe this has floated around once or twice before. This again was here in February, we updated just with a few brief notes. But ultimately, everything is the same. This was, I think, distributed early this week as well. So I just wanted to open it up if anyone had any questions for us. I'd be happy to answer, I'd be happy to speed away.
Yes, trustee, I remember this vividly, the past administration. I remember you and I remember your colleague, right? One of the concerns that I had for the village itself, and I've mentioned this to you before, that in my partner down the way, mentioned the brightness of the outside of the Speedway. And I mentioned some of the changes, the cosmetic changes that we needed to have over at University Parkway Speedway. And I'd mentioned it to you, but it was sort of cost prohibitive in your eyes that you would wanna see a return before some sort of brightness to the inside of it. Because I remember Madam Mayor, she brought it up. And I brought the bathroom situation up. Right now, both bathrooms are locked down. If you ever go into Speedway right now, because you cannot use the washroom facilities, and I had mentioned that to you before, and upgrade before they lock them down, now no one can use a washroom facility. And I think this is atrocious out there, to be honest with you. Early in the morning, that serves coffee in the morning and it's very busy, but you cannot use a washroom facility. I have never seen a Speedway that you can't use a washroom facility, nothing has been done about it.
So I'll have to check specifically.
You can go right now, there's yellow tape.
I'm not saying I'm gonna go unlock the door, but some of our locations do have a key and that's to prevent vandalism, drugs, things like that. And I'm not saying that that's necessarily what's happening in this scenario, but I do know that we have a handful of stores out there that it's at a manager discretion if they were gonna lock, or maybe certain parts of the day they do that. So I can't speak specifically to that.
It's been locked down for over thirty days now, thirty days.
But I don't know, I guess what I'm trying to get to is if anyone's asked for a key to use the restroom.
Me, personally.
And they're not allowing that, is that what you're...
No, they're not.
So I can follow up with that for sure. Just to get on your other point about us being here in the past and what we can do and can't do, so.
My partner mentioned it because the brightness of the facility, because he's a former police officer, police officer. He mentioned the brightness of the outside of the Speedway, which was a part of something that we discussed before the gaming aspect of it. And also I've mentioned the washroom facilities, but they were like glossed over and then we didn't hear from you until basically now.
So I believe it's my understanding, and Theresa, maybe you can help me explain this a little bit better. But I know we've had a couple of, and this is over the course since February. We've been, we've sent multiple emails reaching out, asking for updates and follow-ups. And I believe we've made some phone calls as well. And so part of our ask to just be in front of you today is just to get the ball rolling again. We're not opposed to doing updates. In fact, we, it's probably a good thing that we're having a conversation now because in the meantime, since February until now, locally, we've opened three other establishment license sites locally. So we have Crestwood, Crete and Willow Springs where we've done this. And we've actually internally, that was kind of our first remodel with a gaming room inside and not really understanding what that looks like and you have some, you're building something brand new in an older site. So we've taken a lot of that back and I believe from a Speedway upper management perspective, people are willing to, so I think, I don't want to commit to anything in particular, but there's conversations that we're saying, hey, could we even just repaint the whole interior and touch the restrooms?
Madam Mayor brought up the interior and my partner brought up the exterior and I brought up the bathroom. So I think that they need to be addressed. And even with the proposal tonight, I would want to beautify that site over there because it's dull and it needs to be updated, to be honest with you.
Mayor, may I be recognized? Here we go again. It just seems like someone always, I, look, yes, we have four new people up on the board. But once again, three people had the same presentation, the same type of comments. Now, I'm glad that you upgraded it, build out over it, Crete. Because Crete, their Speedway looks bright, clean, everything. I'm gonna say it again, so that our mayor can hear. If you want something from us, and I know I said it last time, if you want video gaming proposal from us, you go back and tell your company, the University Park is tired of the Speedway looking the way it is over there on Western. We're tired of one the way it looks over here, just dark on Governor's Highway, the one you asked us to propose. In fact, the one over here on Western, our Department of Public Works cleaned up. I don't care, I've seen them cleaning up Speedway. So at some point, and I don't mean to seem angry because the last guy that walked out here basically never answered my question. So I'm a little ticked, but then you come back and I see this and I, and yeah, I would vote for something that's gonna bring revenue to you and us as a village. But you need to do what we ask of you and that's the problem with University Park. Everybody wants something from us. And maybe I'm just a little ticked because the guy that walked out, University Park is always paying somebody, but we never get paid. So see with him, I get mad when Bill's payable says X amount of dollars to a company here in our Tiff and we paying the money. But we can actually clean, build out, secure, and they don't do it. Beautify it some way to make our village look better and they don't do it.
Can I do my...
Yes, sir.
So, um... The, so totally agree and I can verbally permit that, that we, a part of everything, that's what I'm trying to propose here is it's not just us coming in and wanting to get video gaming and walking out with extra income or anything like that. It's, I understand and I would be up here again if I didn't think that we couldn't do something. But we have now also changed since we met last, well, right around that time. We just acquired another chain up the west coast and we're now four thousand stores coast to coast, thirty-five or thirty-six states. So to get, to get specific money, and we're one corporate entity, right? So to get specific money for a site just to do a lighting upgrade, it has to be tied to a bigger picture. So that's really what I would be proposing is let's sit down together and work through that. So if it is lighting, if it is interior, if it is restrooms, let us go back and get an estimate for what that cost would look like, build it into our economics and see if we can make something work. By no means are we trying to, again, I'm not gonna stand up here and say the same thing. And just to that follow-up point that I believe last time that we were here, that there was interest in doing it, but we've had a gap now. And that's what I'm trying to understand is what can we do? We've had unanswered phone calls and emails, so I'm just trying to follow up.
Manager Pay.
Go ahead, excuse me, one second. So the past is good, we're no longer gonna reflect on the things that happened in the past. We know what we expect now. And what I would ask from my board members is to give me a list of things that you would like to see done at that Speedway gas station. And if Speedway is ready to comply with those things, then I don't think that we will have a problem moving forward. But the desires of the board that represent the community, that's what the concern is, that's what the concern is. We want to make sure that we have the opportunity to entertain you guys, but that's gonna be a fine destiny now. Soon as the board comes up with their desires and their footwork, if they would like to see, we can move forward. Because Tiff talked about what we used to do and under this system, that's behind us. Moving forward, let's see what we can do together, join me, all right? So we do want a nice clean gas station. We do want the opportunity to have it look like a ballpark when we come down to change the motor bar. We do want it to have curb appeal. We want it to look nice and steady when people go up into the restroom, that it's a clean facility. We want our university... that it's a clean facility, we want our University Park system to pay with this all, so if everybody agrees, you can bring what you want to see in that gas station, curb and washrooms are a very good point, the landscaping is a good point, the, the lighting is a good point, public safety, and I don't think that we'll have a problem if we can complete those, we can cross those.
Perfect, okay, cool. Anything else?
Uh, yes, Mr. Madam President.
I think the biggest issue that we ran to before Mayor is the addition, the additional liquor license, the board goes on adding the liquor licenses, or, or pour license, because we're maxed out on liquor licenses, so I think that was, that was, that was, that was the caveat, it did come before the, the board, and the board was not inclined in increasing liquor licenses because of input from residents, because they say we have too many liquor stores already, and don't want to add additional liquor licenses and various different things like that. So it's not the fact that we don't want you guys to do video gaming, it's the fact that we would have, we're maxed out on liquor licenses, the board would have to vote on a separate ordinance to increase liquor licenses, and then you guys would be able to be issued. So I just wanted to make that apparent, because in order for this to happen, ordinance would have to come before the board to make that.
Actually, that's coming to the board on the twenty, at the board meeting.
Okay.
So we want you, we're going to get a list, we'll have Madam President email you immediately, and see what, what it's looking like, and then we'll move forward, see what, what has to happen.
And you have the right question.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Well, I appreciate everyone's time, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, where are we going now? Five A one, a discussion of resolution to full and authorized execution of an agreement by and between the village of University Park and John Cass Barrett Company. Discussions.
Yeah, Mayor, I think this company.
Yeah, and, and the purpose of this is just to extend the outside person, the firm doing the, bringing the audit of the financial admin, a part of a financial director.
Um, Mayor, or if this would be more from counsel, you go to section three, operation, optimization and direction, where it says, in the first line, the mayor, the village board hereby authorizes the real estate to execute agreement substantially in the form of such agreement attached here as in section eight, and such changes therein shall be approved. I guess the question I have, changes shall be approved by the village attorney, and officials of the village execute agreement should it be the village attorney and the mayor and board of trustees?
Um, I guess they, you can do it that way, either way is appropriate trustee approach. The idea is that if there are some changes that in regards to maybe schoolwork or things of that nature, that if the village manager or the village officials have some changes, that, that we would have to bring it up to the board every time there's a necessary change to the agreement.
Right, well, uh, I'm okay if we can change it to, I, I think for something like this, the board should know based upon, you know, the financial crisis we have been in, and something like this, if we can change it to approve by the village, village attorney and the board of trustees, the, the language in that, section three.
Um, can we also include the village manager on that as well, since he'd be?
Yep.
I'm okay with it.
I agree, if we can add, if we can put those, those in there.
Everybody familiar with what this company does, trustee vote, you've got it familiar with, right?
Yeah, and, and, and just so, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think I am correct, that since we had this company, manager paid the finance, we are in the right direction with, with that books, and actually, we're, we're almost rolling into nineteen, right?
I started nineteen and rolled on to twenty.
So we are actually, we're, we're in great momentum for the books to be up to date by end of October. Okay, so that's, so Mayor, yeah, if we can.
At a cheaper price.
Okay, we can, we can put, I, 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 yes, if we, as long as I see that language, I'll vote yes.
I've written your language down, I'll make sure to change it.
All right.
Any other questions?
What books, please? What books are you talking about?
Ms. Morgan, please, please, don't, don't holler out from the audience, please.
You know, I understand, and I'm trying to, you know, reframe myself, but.
But you know, and I'm not going to have this dialogue with you.
You are continuing to have a meeting among yourself, we don't know what you're talking about. When you're talking about books and stuff, I want to know what book.
Okay, but it's still not the appropriate thing for you to holler at the audience, and I'm not going, we're not going to go back and forth, but I understand, thank you.
Talk to me.
Everybody good with moving forward with Cass Barrett Company?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, all right, all right, thank you, all right, got it, thank you very much. Next item? The Ontario group.
I want the Ontario group to come up to the podium, this is a presentation from Ontario group who is slated to become the village's new engineer, they're going to do a brief presentation on their services, leaves the board opportunity to ask questions, and from there, let us know if you concur for this to go to the next agenda, so we can switch and change engineers, our current engineers to Robinson engineering. This change with the new Robinson engineering as the principal engineer for the village to the Ontario group, I have met with this group on multiple occasions since May, they've worked, worked on smaller projects for us, so I felt more than fair that they can get provided opportunity to present to the board and see what the board feels and move in that direction.
So, thank you all for having us here today, considering us, my name's Eric Nagu, I'm a principal with the firm, the firm is based here in Chicago, we've done, for at least twelve or fifteen years, we've done work in the suburban area, never directly until recently with, with University Park, although we're familiar with the community, we're very excited about the opportunity. The firm really shifted in twenty-fifteen to focus on more of a holistic approach to consulting, recognizing that post-recession municipalities and the private sector, we work with both, cut staff, they cut resources as a reaction to the recession, and really weren't building that up because of, as a precautionary measure, or in some cases because the communities had recovered, so we decided, let's create a firm where communities and our clients don't need to have multiple consultants and deal with multiple issues, they can have one point of contact who will sort of handle whatever it is that may come up. We may not be able to do everything, because there are some very specialized things in this world, but we can at least have resources, vendors, and, and tools that we can bring to your, your attention. We also consider ourselves very much partners, so we are not about billing every hour, we're about solving problems, understanding what their concerns of the trustees are, of the community, of the business community, and how do we think through those problems and challenges in ways that are both efficient and economical. So we do very typical types of engineering, urban planning things, we also have, as you see on the sheet, we've sort of divided our firm into civil engineering, planning and design, which is your typical zoning, land use planning, comprehensive planning, those kinds of things, and then strategic consulting, and that's a lot of grant writing, we do a lot, a lot of grant writing on behalf of our clients, that's thinking through economic development decisions, providing economic analysis, that most consulting firms that do more typical engineering don't provide, so we're really trying to take a very holistic look at the decisions and, and give you the best advice that we can give. And we really consider ourselves the community's consultant, so it's not just, a lot of times you'll just be collaborating with one person or one entity, but we encourage everybody to, to communicate with us, ask questions, if you have constituents from a particular area that are complaining about flooding or ponding or some issue, you know, we're an open book, just contact us, we're open twenty-four-seven, whether we like it or not, cell phones and email have changed that world, so we are very responsive, we're very engaged. I'm usually up and working by about five AM, and I'm still here tonight, so I have long days. Curtis was going to be here, but he had done leave to attend to his wife, so, in any case, that's kind of who we are, we're very excited about the opportunity, we, we see nothing but potential in this community, you all have done a great job, I understand there have been some challenges in the past, some financial things it sounds like you're working through, the way the community lays out is really not ideal, we've got industrial on one side, residential on the other, I think there's opportunity for commercial development in the community, there's certainly a need for it, and, you know, we've got resources, we're, we'll, we'll bring those to the table and try to help out of that however we can.
Any questions from any board members?
Yes, what municipalities have you worked for?
We currently the engineers for Farnet Park for Ford Heights, through Buffalo and Michigan, White Wright in Texas, Bells in Texas, we do a considerable amount of work for St. Joseph County in Indiana, which is where Notre Dame unfortunately is located.
And how, how you get introduced to University Park?
The mayor was, we worked with the mayor when he was working with Ford Heights.
Okay. I can't complain, it's, it's over, it's about reasonable, one forty, you have for your senior project manager, senior planner, your senior project manager, one sixty-five, so, Mayor, you have a lot of time on that one.
We work to keep our fees low and competitive and try to maintain low overhead.
I, I would tell the board that I support this change, for several years, the village has been getting increasingly, increasingly larger and larger bills from Robinson Engineering, and I feel like a change could be positive, this is a change that always will be undone, I think it's okay to test the waters, to see who else is out there doing the, doing the work, and not necessarily monopolize all the work that's been done. For note, there are still a couple of projects that are ongoing that Robinson Engineering will still be participating in, because they did the initial engineering, construction engineering, and various different work on that, so Robinson Engineering is not being cut out of the picture completely, because there's still longstanding projects that they've been working on, this is just bringing in a new engineer firm to move forward in the future, addressing our pool, addressing Regal Farm, addressing the lake, and various other projects that we're looking at, and kind of diversifying their experience, they have a very, very holistic approach in looking at engineering, as well as they have a lot of interdisciplinary networks, as well as staffing, to do a lot of different things that typical engineering firm typically doesn't do, so I feel this change is needed, more of a refresh, and again, at the end of the day, is, we're, both parties are interviewing each other, the University Park is interviewing them, and I'm monitoring their work, and they're, you know, monitoring our relationship with them, so either relationship we sever at any time, but I think at this point, you know, I think we should go into the honeymoon period and see how things work with this group.
Mayor, may I be recognized? Uh, um, Manager Pay, how many projects do Robinson Engineering, I know we've worked on a lot of stuff, but how many projects do we have left?
So this resurfacing project, and then we have a path, path project that's about to come up in the next month or so, and that will be it.
What about, were they involved on that Abbott, this street resurfacing?
Abbott and Hearst?
Yeah.
They did phase one engineering.
Okay.
Basically, it's still at its infancy, so it can go either way, Robinson can keep the work, or we can get through the work that give, I didn't, this group their phase one engineering core sample results, and they can continue on with the work, we actually discussed that earlier this afternoon. I think that the fairest thing to do is any work that Robinson's been working on for a longstanding period of time, and have them contain that work, which is these major projects that are going on right now, within the next ninety days, and then anything beyond that, transfer over to the new engineer, and have them look into the things and take over. Also, there are a lot of great opportunities that are coming about, that I think we need to jump on immediately, that this group has access to, anybody has access to, but I believe they have the expertise to get it done.
That was going to be my next question, your grant writing expertise here, because we have a lot of things that can be done, I think we had several projects, at least that I've been up here, that Robinson Engineering has done, and has helped this village, for us to be crawling back the past two years, since recovering from the financial crisis, so I ask you, you think you're capable of helping this village crawl, continue to crawl back?
I prefer that you run. But, uh, yeah, we, we did very aggressive and very successful, and I think that's one of the reasons that the mayor was interested in bringing us here, is our success rate with grant funding has been pretty considerable, and pretty consistent.
When did you start with Cal Park?
Five years ago.
Okay, were you involved?
It's a similar situation, Robinson was their engineer, and exactly how the manager suggested is sort of how the transition happens.
Were you involved in like that redevelopment, like what, one hundred twenty-seventh street and so forth that they had going on, where, was that your project, or was that Robinson Engineering? I think that was.
I'm not sure which project that was.
Yeah, they were, they were doing a lot of street resurfacing, I don't know, I remember they were doing a lot of work at Cal Park at one point, about five years ago, so.
Yeah, that may have predated us.
Okay, because we can use a lot of more construction cones around, so.
We're done.
Yeah. Mayor, you have a lot of time.
Trustee Danny.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes.
Um, I, I had the pleasure of meeting you a couple of, maybe a month or so ago, in reference to a grant that you proposed for Regal Farm, I wanted to know what has come with that grant, if anything, and where could we stand with it?
So that was the Ozley grant, and that was submitted, and then subsequently, there were some issues with the previous Ozley grant, so the state said that we had to wait a couple of years, this predated all of us here, so I'm not entirely sure what the criteria that was, but I think that that's starting to get resolved, I know the mayor went, drove down to Springfield to meet with DNR.
Yeah.
And had a conversation with, actually, he drove down to submit their grant, so I think that that's being worked through, but I don't think it's going to be considered for this year, however, they have encouraged us to just sit on it, because the grant application's the same, and then reapply at the next cycle. But we are, we had a meeting earlier today with the manager, with the mayor, with Claudia about pursuing additional grant funding, because there is a park grant that's coming out later this year, I think in early December that'll be released.
December, December.
Yeah, so we'll be pursuing that, and, and we've also talked to the field museum about Regal Farms, and looking at getting their support, because I've worked with them for a number of years on different things, and they have different tools and resources they can bring to a project like that.
Yeah, Mayor, if, this is not for him. Counsel, can we, on page three, I see the same language, can we make the same as the previous?
Yes, I have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, much, Mr. Ontario group, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
The questions from the audience are gone, I'm sorry.
Is this the cow?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So that concludes our agenda for the cow meeting. Oh, yeah, there, there is, there is one more, there, there is one more discussion item which has been drawn up. So I've been asking the attorneys to look at a minority participation ordinance because there's a lot of work going on in town and it seems like we do not have the opportunity to employ minorities or people from the community. So that was the, one of the discussion areas that we did not have a presentation for because it was just open dialogue between us to see how everyone feels about having something in place. Cause I truly believe that there's going to be lots of building going on and to not have our fair share of minority participation, in my opinion, is just completely unacceptable. So any questions regarding that? Uh, we, you should, they have to draft an ordinance and all that stuff, but we need to know what your thoughts are as far as that, because most towns do have some kind of, uh, minority participation for veterans, for local, local hirees and everything else as well.
So the state, just so, and maybe answer a couple of questions. So like the state of Illinois has had like a ten percent that the contractors should have, um, a ten percent level.
Set aside, this is set aside?
Um, well.
No, go ahead, I don't think you're calling it set aside, but.
But a requirement as far as, um, on the projects that they, that they hired, that the subcontractors should have at least like ten percent minority owned or ten percent minority, um, employees of that nature. Sometimes what we recommend you do is actually kind of do a study of what, what do you have currently outgoing with your project? Maybe, uh, maybe when you look at your current contractors out there, you find that you're actually at a, at a very high level. I don't know where you are with that. Um, the other part is just making sure, um, if you're past that bubble, then you may not necessarily need to do that. If you are not at a level that you feel is acceptable, then it's something that you want to explore and something the village manager, you know, it, it really, you know, his input is also crucial in that in regards to the contractors and things that they can apply.
So, so really, the, the touch on the subject, um, I've had extensive conversations with the mayor since May, day one, uh, listening to the subject, they, um, worked on multiple occasions. Uh, we've been in conversation with the village attorney, um, and this probably will be, gonna be cowed again because the attorney didn't have an ordinance developed at the time he's working on it. We have to be politically correct, uh, when drafting ordinance of, of this. So, uh, it's not going to be one of those easy ordinances to draft, but it's going to get done. Um, because that's the mayor's request, so it's going to happen. Uh, once, I think we have better, have, we have better dialogue. Once we actually have our ordinance in front of us and we're reading language and wording, and I think we have a better kind of thought process, I think what the mayor's trying to get is, is this something you guys think that should happen? You know, seeing more minorities, uh, in a lot of the projects that we have, what's your observations even as residents? What's your observations on these various work sites that you see, uh, and various different things like that? Cause we do want to make sure we have minority representation, both in the work site and in these internship programs. And I know the mayor has been down to I D W, uh, preaching that as well, trying to get more minorities in the internship programs and apprenticeship, apprenticeship programs as well. So, uh, this is how all this kind of came about and kind of came to fruition. But, uh, once we get language and, and you all actually, I think we have to have more conversational substance. Am I in the right angle, mayor?
Yeah.
And, and you're right, the manager pay, I'm not sorry, I'm sorry. You're right, like the state ordinance and some of the others, you know, definitely the definition of minorities, not only is it all about racial minorities, including women, including, uh, people with disabilities and things of that nature. So you're right, that the ordinance has to be drafted in a way so that you're not kind of getting yourself into some of the hot water.
Yeah, no, I, I, I can't remember. We, we did something, what was it that we, we talked about with?
It was a union, making sure that, that, um, people doing construction projects were union members, were members of the union. That's what, that's what the board passed and agreed to.
Okay.
Any projects that go on the village has been done by organized union outfit or, uh, or union organization like pipe fitters or I D W. It can't be a mom and pop guy, alley mechanic individual that just comes in and does work. So that's what the board passed.
That's right. And, and what I wanted to say was, I think we were trying to be careful, uh, because trustee Payton at the time felt that minorities should have that opportunity to be involved. So, yeah, you know, I, I, yeah, if we could, because it was a touchy, it was, it was very touchy with the union guy that was right here, so.
And you're correct, that's been the big issue with Decatur's ordinance. Decatur has, they have an ordinance and the issue with Decatur in regards, they also have the, um, um, the union, um, ordinance as well, was that probably ninety-two percent of the minority owned businesses in the state are in our sixth county area. So the problem in Decatur is that, you know, also with the state, they're having issues because the amount of, um, minority union members down there is not as high as it is up here. Hopefully that's not an issue here, but your, you, uh, village manager Payton, trustee Brooks and the mayor, you guys are, they're, they're absolutely correct. That's one of the issues for sure that has come about in regards to trying not to, just trying to make sure you meet those. Hopefully in your area it's not, it's not in a situation where, you know, what we've seen in, in Cook County and, and in the city of Chicago is that they've actually been forced to because of support decrees, because of, of, of past practices. So it's luckily, you know, you guys, that's not something we've had some challenge or a loss with in regards to.
Okay.
No, no, we're still going to come back to cow because the ordinance and the drafts have to ask them from there. All right, so everybody is agreed that we need some kind of participation so they can draw some drafts and we can, you know, look at it and bring it back maybe next month for the cow. Because with construction season start, we want to ensure that our local workforce has the opportunity to participate.
Okay, excuse me. Mayor, uh, do you?
Yes, trustee.
To give a historical perspective on when Harold Washington was elected mayor for the first time in nineteen eighty-three, he proposed at that time, five percent of the city contracts in the city of Chicago be, uh, designated for minorities, right?
Right.
And it got so bad there and he had his first opposition with that particular, uh, ordinance that he wanted to put out that you started getting, uh, uh, owners of business, businesses hiring black females. That means they kill two birds with one stone, female and. Black, right? So with this in place, it, it should give us.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll feature that, absolutely.
And we don't have to, don't act twenty-nine against us.
I don't know what any is. And you know what, I just want to make you remember tomorrow is nine-one-one, so let's keep that in mind for those who have lost and it's still affecting us today as we speak, so that is tomorrow. So in my goal for nine-one-one, we'll fly the flag, have staff, John. All right, I'd like to make a motion to go into an executive session.
I mean.
I need a motion to go into an executive session for the purposes of personnel and litigation. Motion by trustee Wade, second by trustee Bowman, roll call.
Hold on.
Hold on. Hold on.